Without justice.
Well, I guess I look at these things. There's some legal behind it all, you know.
Okay, this is our special city council meeting. It's Thursday, July the 25th. With that, we'll do a roll call. Mayor Ryland here, Councilman Phillips here, Councilman Henninggrass here, Councilman Richards here, Councilman Erv here. All right, tonight is a special city council meeting. There's, uh, it's with all special city council meetings, there's no public forum, so we'll stick to the agenda. Uh, the first item is a, um, Orinoco Park blood damage repair approval for a quote for nature's plus A S T M compliant playground safety surfacing. I believe this is for the River Park. Repair. I make a motion, we approve the quote of four thousand, forty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Just like a rubber mat.
I guess it is, you know, I'm guessing that's, I don't think it's, um, yeah. I don't think Kane's here.
Kane is here.
Is that what is Kane, a mat?
A mulch.
Mulch, okay.
Over a mulch.
There a second?
A second. Any other comments?
Is that out of our budget? Do we have budget for that or?
Um, the playground equipment, I'm guessing we have budget for.
Yeah.
Okay.
If there is FEMA money, if that happens, but then we got opportunity to get reimbursed for that, so.
Does the city have insurance to cover some of that? Or do they cover any slip damage?
I don't know if it covers flood damage, I don't think we.
We can look into it, it's one of those that. Look into it.
Certainly would hurt his big feet.
Either way, it'd be good to get reimbursed.
Absolutely, one or another if you can.
Seeing none, all in favor, sticking up, probably saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Approved. Uh, next item is a, um, fire relief gambling license for a, a duck race. It's downtown, we're going for both of our days. Just a temporary for the day, I think it is, seventeenth of August.
I make a motion to approve the fire relief gambling license.
Oh, second time. Comments?
I question, do they need one? They already have a gambling license for pole pads, they need, why do they need to buy one for this?
Makes it special.
Um, well, I can't, you come forward to the podium and answer that.
No, that's all picky out.
Um, so yes, I do have gambling at Tilly's, but that is my premise, and I do have, the fire hall's a premise, but the duck races neither at Tilly's nor at fire hall, it's at the park, so I need an offsite permit, which I emailed to Jason and Renee, so I just need city approval for that offsite permit and probably somebody to sign it as the lesser. And then I can send that into the state for.
It's an offsite permit, where is there one specific spot you have to sell the tickets for this, or, or can they be sold?
We're already selling tickets, but that's where the race physically will be at, so.
I just would think you would need to do that. Second license. Anyway.
That's what my compliance officer.
You have the comments. Seeing none, all in favor, sticking up, probably saying aye.
Aye.
That's approved, thanks, Ken.
Will you, so will I get that email, that form emailed back to me, or?
That's my daughter.
Yeah, we'll get it taken care of, and, um, I should have it signed tomorrow for you.
Okay.
Think they need the meeting minutes with it though, so that'll be the slight delays, we gotta get the meeting minutes done for it, so it should be by Monday, the latest to go for you.
Shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah.
I did have a question on that, the fee, the hundred dollar fee. It would be nice to have some clarification on when and how often that fee is applicable. Cause the city code really says nothing.
That's a good question. I know the annual fees, and I think that's what you're talking about.
It doesn't even say it's an annual.
Oh, just.
I thought the permit said it was good up to so many events a year.
Yeah.
So if you had two or three, four or five events, you wanted to do.
Yeah.
But that's also. Now, I also have like my lease with Tilly's, that's, that's not an annual lease, that's a lease until either Tilly's is changed or we, something changes on the lease, so. If you want to charge that annually, I think the city needs some form.
Yeah, but this allows you twelve offsite events.
Correct, but I also only dated it for that one day.
Right.
And it's only good for the park.
So up on the top of that application says no fee, what is that?
The state doesn't charge.
The state, that's a state fee.
Yeah, that's a state form.
Got it.
And we use the state form for the city instead of making a law, a second form.
Right. But I guess my question is which state form, cause that's a different form than my lease at Tilly's.
Depends. Well, it's just like the liquor licenses, they have a temporary one, and then they have a full one, and then they have just a beer one, so it depends on what you want, which form you fill out, and that's what we need.
So every form I send in, I'll have to pay a hundred dollars?
Where it's set up, the house council feels different.
That's something we can look at when there are.
I mean, unless they change it to where it's like just a hundred dollars a year per organization, or something. Or can we, I mean, if I have a bunch of different sites or a bunch of different forms I gotta send in, then I'm sending in a hundred dollars for every site?
Well, I wonder, is it possible for, on this form, just to say city of Orinoco instead of city park? Or Orinoco Park?
I think they want a specific location, and I asked if I could just have the fire hall as my location, and they said no.
Okay.
And then you have, then that's fine, yeah.
Well.
Can you check on that, Jason?
Yeah, we've done checking, it's all over the place, it's something that we'll have to address as, you guys will have to address as council, we'll have to figure something out down the road. Cause I, and I've emailed him, like, I know it's, we know it's, it, we're just kind of going off of what's been done, and looking at how everything's written. There's no clear communication, so we're looking at just how we've done things in the past, and because it's a different permit or a different place for a different thing, that's why there's that fee that we're using this time. So it's, you know.
I think you said that we haven't paid the fee since two thousand eighteen.
Which is, and I don't know if that's just a lack of follow-up on previous.
It could be, I think, it was possible since when Heather took over Tilly's, that would have been last year, twenty twenty-three. If Tammy had a five-year lease, that would have been two thousand eighteen, so that's probably the last time we would have done that lease agreement, and when I did the one with Heather, he, nobody charged us, or nobody asked us for a hundred dollars, so. That's kind of the timeline that I'm thinking in my head, but I, I don't know for sure what the case was.
No, no, we got the.
But that's all I'm asking, is just for you guys to look at it, clarify it.
Okay.
We'll get back to you on that then.
Thanks, Ken.
Next item is our Hammond Development. And before we, uh, start off with our first resolution, I'd like to have a representative Hamilton that would like to speak. Any updates or changes, um, come to the podium and share those comments.
I, I got a question on that, Ryland, as point of order. Okay, um, when we turned around, and normally when we go through this, we don't have that from planning and zoning before it comes back to council. So, um, I don't know if we should make an exception to that now, or follow the rules that we were doing in the past.
Uh, in the past, when we've had special city council meetings on particular subjects, wherever that had been, just like we had at our council meeting, we would have that party come to the, as we haven't had a chance to talk either, the council hasn't had a chance to talk to them, so that's our opportunity to ask questions, then to share any updates. So that's why I think it's very proper for them to come forward.
Uh, like what, what kind of updates are we talking about? Cause I would assume there can't be updates, it's already submitted, cause once it's submitted, it's submitted, right?
And that's the way I look.
Your recommendation's been submitted, but that's not been approved.
Well, no, but I can.
But what the developer submits.
And that's what we voted on in planning and zoning, was what there was that they had presented to us, which is what we've had in our packet.
So if we have any questions as we go through the resolutions, we can ask them to come to the podium and answer those questions, right?
Uh, that's why I'm asking the question, I, I don't think that that's the way it was set up for anybody else that there is, when we've done it before, but again, that's why I'm asking the question.
That's a good question, but I think that's, for Erv, Paul, and I, we haven't had a chance to ask questions. But this is our opportunity to ask questions for clarification, you've had the opportunity, and P and Z, now we have the opportunity. Okay? So I think that's why it's appropriate.
Well, one thing I'm curious about for clarification is, in the past, when we've done, when we've done preliminary plaits and stuff, same packet went to planning and zoning, comes to city council, and and I seen the packet was about this thick for planning and zoning, and we didn't see that same packet. Clarification here. It should have been the same package.
Yeah, I'm sure I should say it.
We sent all the attachments and said if you would like a hard copy to let us know, and we would have printed one, but you did get them electronically.
You were asked if you wanted copies of anything to let them know, they would, excuse me, they would print them all. Because they're eleven by seventeen, the multi-pages, and so that was, you had the opportunity to get copies of everything.
So that, so in order for me to get copies, it's something if I don't specifically ask, not, it's not gonna just be handed to you, right? That's what you just said.
If you were asked for them before the meeting, of course, to look it over, that was.
I asked for them to look them over through, before the, before the meeting, before the planning and zoning made them pay, that's how I knew the packet was different than what we got for city council. City council had a different packet last.
That's true, it is.
Last week.
Well, it wasn't meant to keep information from the council, it's just another way of getting it to you without the extra added cost of printing off forty fifty pages, I guess. But it was in the email that they want to ask, they would print those copies off. And yes, it's, your P and Z is just a duplicate. Cause they've seen it, they have copies already. And when it came to the council, we just, or, city staff thought it was appropriate just to ask if you want copies.
So, so P and Z looks at one, one form, one stack of papers. The next packet that comes to us, we're supposed to make, be able to make a same or a different decision with less information, or?
Now, you still had access to the information in a PDF form that provided to you.
Well, the other thing too that fits into this was, uh, when we had public forum that there was, when we talked about this a week ago. We had a chance to be able to ask questions at that time and everything that was going on, and, and, uh, Hamilton, Ari, and everybody had a chance to get up and talk at that time as well. You know, and so the main reason for this special meeting is just to turn around, uh, to do it in, in a voting form, if I remember right from what Mike said. You know, that we couldn't vote on it, but, um, Ari and, and the group had a chance to sit up and talk and give their, their recommendations at that time and and answer any questions, so we've already been through it once.
So. But do you agree that we can still ask them questions, come to the podium? For the three of us?
That's what, I mean, that's what I thought we, you know, I thought we had that opportunity when we had the city council meeting to do that.
Well, we never got to it because of the motion. I have a special meeting.
But we had all the public comments that there were for the public forum that there was, and Ari also got up and, and Hamilton got up and talked during that time a lot. And they gave their, their stuff, so.
Well, let's put it this way, I, I'm offering the opportunity for them to come up and say, maybe they don't have anything to say, but when we get into the resolutions, if we have questions that Erv, I, or Paul have, or you have at least, you may have more questions too.
Well, again, I, I just go back to what we've already done with that, and, and this has never come out before, and all the other stuff that we've had, um, and, and so you're asking for something different this time. And I'm trying to have it where we're not setting a precedent, and on this being done this way, then anybody else comes and does the same thing. So that's, that's why I'm asking the question for, point of information on this.
Especially, like I guess we've had those people come forward on this, with the agenda.
Or, or do we come to a compromise, if there are questions? Cause yes, we've already heard from Ari and, and several others, but if the council has questions, allow them to come up and answer.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm just asking the questions, okay?
It's, it's not. And I, and I agree, I don't think we do this, the public forum over and, and, um, you know, come up to the podium and, and give their version or any other version of it, but if the council has questions to help make their decision, I think that, I think that's fair, and I think we have done that, where we'll ask a question, but not, you know, in, you know, not let somebody get up and, and go through the whole thing again, but I think if we have questions to make our decision, cause we were here last time and heard that. That's, that's my suggestion.
That's, we can proceed that way, and, and, uh, I've got several questions I want to ask, so they're free to answer their questions and make any other comments at that time too. Okay? Uh, so the first item on the agenda is a, um, resolution for denial, land use plan amendment. Packet is a, the information along with the memo from Stan Tech. Um, their findings and facts. It's interesting, I did, I find it interesting that P and Z, um, gave us recommendations for denial as opposed to what we've done in the past is resolutions of approval slash denial. And which, we still get the option to the council to make that formal decision, and in this case, I, it came to us as a deny, a denial only.
Well, if you look at everything, if there was Ryland in the other packet, everything that there was in here that went to P and Z was only for approval.
Right.
And so you have to take a look at what you get for approval that was in here, that Phil had given us. And this time he had to turn around and write the denial because it was left out of the original packet for planning and zoning, and also for what there was at city council before, so that's why this packet only says for denial. Okay?
Cause approval is in here as well.
It's in here.
It was only, it was one-sided.
Yeah, and, and normally we always have both sides, like you're saying, but, but Phil did not do the other side, and that's why we had to do it the way we did it at planning and zoning, and also for us to turn around to have this for us, so, but then here, good for, for the other side.
But on July eleventh, though, you had a finding of facts for approval from Stan Tech.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm, so we didn't have.
We didn't have any findings of facts for denial.
Yeah, cause we normally.
So that's, that's fine, so at the planning and zoning meeting on July, um, eleventh. You're asking P and Z meeting, yeah, so I just thought it was ironic that after the public hearing closed, then it was automatically read a, uh, motion for denial, and there was never any discussion. At the, the public hearing was closed on the date, so you, you, there was no discussion about what was presented with the approval memo and the finding of facts.
Yes, there was, we had quite a bit of, of discussion that there was after that, and you were at that meeting too, at planning and zoning. So you know the discussion took place, or maybe that was after you left, but we did have an open discussion with everything on that, absolutely.
Well, that's not what I, I remember, cause the public hearing, we had two public hearings, and there's no discussion on the first meeting. But you had an approval memo for finding of facts from.
We did not, we, all we did on the first one was just have a public hearing, we did not have anything that, that went one way or the other.
Ryland, I think those finding of facts you're talking about were at the last city council meeting, where it was only, only four. There was only four approvals, there was no denial ones with the, uh, at the city council meeting.
And so that, if you look at that, is in the first part or after, it's, it's also included in here on the finding of facts, okay? In our packet, and that's the ones that came from the planning and zoning. Okay, but all of this was discussed, everything was, was discussed at length, and the council was actually at that same, uh, meeting that there was for planning and zoning, every city council person was there.
I don't know.
You know, of course, I mean, it was, but, but. But planning and zoning did discuss it, absolutely, we discussed it. That's why we came up with, with what our findings were, was our discussion that we had.
Really, long and short of it is, planning, zoning, we normally get two sides. This, these are the reasons for approval, these to recommend approval, these are the reasons to recommend denial, and we only got one side. So that's all we had to go on.
And that's what you're asking for this, this July twenty-fifth.
Well, if you remember.
Were denial findings of facts, that's your packet.
Yeah, what I did is, I remember I told you that I had all the findings of facts for denial, and you wouldn't let me hand it out on the last city council meeting. And I was gonna hand it out at that time, and, and then it was put up that with us having, without having the the resolutions that needed to be attached to it, we would be, uh, you know, maybe get a chance of being sued because we didn't do that. And hence, that's why we're here tonight, is to be able to do that with the resolutions that are associated with that.
So, can I just, this is, kinda going way off track, is Phil here today?
Yes.
Yeah, Bill? Yes, he's here.
Yeah.
Oh, is he, is he in person there?
Yes. You're gonna come up to the podium?
Yeah, please.
Oh, okay, so here's how I see, see this, the city council was given, gave us a direction, Phil and with my help, a direction to draft findings, resolutions to deny the various land use applications, so that's what we did. If the council, that doesn't prevent the council from making a motion in support of the development project, but we don't, we don't have resolutions for that tonight because we weren't, we were specifically told to do the opposite, so we did the opposite. If the council wants to make a motion to approve the various development requests, you should make a motion to direct us to draft those resolutions, and we'll go draft them. If you want to make a motion to deny the various land use requests, those resolutions are in the packet tonight, and you can just approve those in our view. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense.
And, and if I may, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, sometimes, uh, and I apologize if I've been inconsistent, sometimes I've given both sides, sometimes it's just a recommendation for approval or denial, and, uh, you know, in my practice, again, with dozens of cities over forty years, it's gone both ways, so I apologize if you are expecting always to have both approval and denial, that's not been, uh, my practice, uh, to this point, so uh, again, it, it certainly was the case that in front of the P and Z, I had findings for approval, uh, which I recommended, and then the P and Z had findings for denial, which we crafted into these, so there are, there is the opportunity to uh, do either or both, and as my short memo that was in this council packet, uh, tonight, I said, if you wanted to entertain a motion to approve, there are so many combinations of how you might modify the project that uh, we didn't come up with one set, uh, certainly there was a set of findings originally for approval, as it was presented, more or less, but we'd be happy to, to, uh, put together something if the council gives us direction for approval, if there's a way to modify the project.
Why wouldn't we use the previous approval? What you put together for that, because that was already submitted, and we just asked just for the denial side of it, to get both sides of it.
Right.
You know, so I don't think we have to draft anything that was already here.
No, you need a resolution, you need drafted resolutions, so you would have to take the findings, Phil's proposed findings were in a memo. So when you approve or deny land use requests like this, you need to do that in writing, and that's, I don't think it's required that it be a resolution, but it's absolutely normal practice and best practice to adopt resolutions. So yes, Phil made written proposed findings of approval in a, in a memorandum. Um, but we don't have resolutions prepared because it was, I mean, I think crystal clear direction from council at the last meeting to prepare resolutions for denial. And so that's what Phil did and I reviewed, and that's what's in the packet, but it doesn't prevent the city from approving it. If you want to approve, if you're inclined to approve it, just make a, you know, make a motion to direct us to draft those approval resolutions, and we'll draft them, you know, using Phil's findings or, or possibly additional findings, if you have additional findings. And that's fine, we can have, absolutely do that. Um, but the only res, I mean, you need to approve resolutions, and the only resolutions in the council for tonight are resolutions for denial um, based on the council's direction, at least that's my view, Phil might have a different view, but that's my view.
Yeah, certainly, that's what, that's what's in the pack tonight, and what I heard at the previous meetings, uh, were a number of concerns about this, and, uh, all I'm suggesting is that the council may wish to take, uh, take the project and say, we had these concerns, let's modify that approval, uh, so it's not a straight denial across the board, you might be able to modify, uh, those findings, I understand that uh, approval as presented, as in the, the findings I originally had, probably isn't what you're, uh, looking for, but there may be, uh, some kind of, uh, milligram that you'd like to entertain, and we'd be happy to, to, uh, work with you to, uh, try and figure that out.
Well, another thing I think that needs to be mentioned too, um, we're going through what there is that was presented to us. Um, and there's nothing that's stopping the Hamilton group or Ari from coming back with another proposal. Um, and I know that land is gonna be developed, there's no question about that. The question is how you're gonna do it, and I think that it's just clean to come back with a new proposal, if, if that's what they have, cause this is what we were presented at this play, I mean, they can come back again in a couple months and say, okay, we want to do the other, and I think that, you know, again, uh, I think everybody in Cedar Woodlands also agrees that, uh, you know, that land will be developed, it's, it's not a question of the development part of it, it's, it's what was presented to us, and what we have that we have to work with right now.
And I think we might have that opportunity tonight, which is what was suggested, that the developer would come up and perhaps, in a give and take, you could come up with, what would that look like, you know, they, the, the developer could come forward with uh, any number of proposals over the next year, and, uh, they, they might all get shot down, uh, but if, uh, with some kind of give and take and questions and answers, perhaps there's something, there's some direction that could be given.
But, but what there is, if that would be the case, then that should go back to planning and zoning again, and that should be done at planning and zoning, not at city council. And so what we should be voting on tonight is exactly what we were presented with, and if they want to come back and discuss something else, then that should be, again, started out the way it should be, which is back at planning and zoning.
Well, planning and zoning gave a complete slate of denial, which is what's brought us here tonight, and the council could direct the developer to go back to planning and zoning, but with some direction, and perhaps that's something that you could discuss tonight. Rather than just say, come back with something, what would that be? I don't know, but direction from council, I think, would be very helpful.
Yeah, cause I, I don't think the intention of planning and zoning for the residents was to say, we don't want this at all, I think that the tone of it was I think that the tone of it was, everybody wants the development, but doesn't necessarily want everything that is being presented in that development.
And I think we've got that opportunity to, to figure out exactly what that looks like tonight.
As part of that, and that's a good point, Jim, because we can go through each of these resolutions. There are some things that we can say, yes, that's something we can work with to make it work, or no, this isn't the thing, and it's the variance or something like that to give direction. We want to see change with some of the items that are in the variance.
I think, yeah. So I, I think we, we could, we could give direction and then have it come back to P and Z. P and Z make the recommendation.
But I think we have to vote on, on these items that are here tonight.
We do.
For the resolution, I think we've got to do that, because it's only for, for all the people that are here.
Right, we have to vote on it, but then I think we give direction, just as, as Phil is saying.
Absolutely, after that, but I think we need to vote on this and get this done tonight, and then have it for discussion, so I want to have this done.
Yeah. Okay, so let's proceed, and we'll see what the council comes up with, and if there are any questions, we'll have Hamilton or representative come to the table, so.
Hey, Phil, do you want to go through these, and we'll let you read them?
Well, and, and if you will, I certainly don't intend to read these line by line. But what you have in front of you here are resolutions, four resolutions dealing with the various requests. The first, two oh four, two oh two four dash two six is dealing with the land use plan, which of course is the, the first, the high level general plan for the city. The second is for the rezoning, two oh four, two oh two four dash two seven, which would follow the land use plan. The third, two oh two four dash two eight deals with the variances. And there's variances to the dimensions, lot size and lot width, and also to the provision for private streets. And the fourth one is then for the plat. And if I could just characterize all of these, the land use plan is then the general, you know, plan for the city, the, the guide, and that's closely tied to the rezoning. That whatever you decide on the land use plan, the rezoning should follow very closely, and that's, that's almost a no brainer, the two, the two are tied. So what they proposed on the land use plan then follows exactly what they're asking for the rezoning. So if you agreed with the land use plan amendment, then it's no question that that rezoning would then also be approved. If you think that land use plan should be something different, and you approve that, then the rezoning should follow whatever that line is. And as, as far as the rezoning for the, the variances to dimensions, those could then follow if you were agreed with the rationale. But let's just take that, that land use plan first. As, as we've said previously, that land use plan, which I helped you all prepare, is a generalized guide. And there's principles involved there, and in this property in particular, that there's a slice of commercial, then a transition, a slice of R two of the medium density, before you get to low density, and then the low density, the single family. So that basic pattern is there. And what is proposed, what has been proposed in Hamilton's original scheme, is that that middle piece, the, the multifamily R two, be expanded, but not so much that it actually touches the other single family. So the principle remains there, that there's commercial, then medium density, and then single family. And in fact, in the detailed plan they put together, they keep larger lots, single family, next to the existing single family, whereas they have smaller single family lots in, in the middle of it. So that scheme, to me, makes sense, and it, and it preserves the principle that was in the land use plan. But that's something that you could, as a council, give direction on, to say, no, we want to keep exactly that slice that was on the, on the map, or yes, we might entertain an idea to expand it some way. Of what we have often done with the land use plan is follow property lines, rather than try and do some kind of more creative approach to it, even though a different approach might definitely make sense once you actually have a, an owner and a developer looking at the property. The second, so those two, the land use plan and the zoning, go together. The next, on the variances, let's take the private streets first. As you know, your city engineer and I were very hesitant about private streets. That's a direction that you could give. You could say, you know what? We want to stick with public streets in public right of way, following city engineering standards, and that could be a perfectly reasonable thing. Or the developer has suggested they're going to set up an escrow to make sure that maintenance happens, and that the problems that you sometimes see with private streets would not occur. Again, that's direction you could give us, and it might be a part of, of a revised plan. But the, the direction on the variance to lot size, to the lot size and lot width, to me, is logical based on what's in your comprehensive plan. That that plan developed, what is it now, eighteen years ago, anticipated municipal sewer, anticipated smaller lot sizes. And the lot sizes that are proposed here are very much in keeping with what we would expect, and even larger than what we would expect, the average, about fifteen thousand square feet for the single family lots. Whereas typically, we see seven, eight thousand square, uh, single family lots in sewer development. So you're getting a much less dense single family. But to keep it at twenty thousand, to me, I think is not in the spirit of what the city has planned all these years for that treatment plant. And it, it is just something that I think is, is reasonable to assume in the development, that there will be smaller lots. The fourth thing, the, the final decision is on the plat. And, and in my mind, the plat is simply the hard line engineering drawing that incorporates the decisions that have been made previously. So if, if there's clear direction and agreement on what the plan looks like, the plat should not be controversial in any way. So that's the, kind of the, the rationale of those pieces. And what's in here, again, are the findings as they were articulated by the Planning and Zoning Commission. But you may choose to discuss, give direction on, on any of those pieces.
So starting that resolution, but someone will make a motion.
Make a motion to, uh, I agree with the finding of facts for denial on resolution number twenty twenty four dash twenty six.
I'll second.
So I'm looking at the finding of facts for denial in that resolution. Is there any comments with those six finding of facts for discussion? They have a couple regarding the item number four. And then I got a four A. Potential for increased traffic and consequently, consequent negative impact on the city, which has not been adequately studied to date. So, you know, that's, you know, I think Phil presented us some traffic analysis, if you will, of the split for going off to Second Avenue versus over to Cedar Point Road. I think it was seventy nine twenty one, if I remember right, so. But it wasn't, wasn't talk about having a true, actual traffic study done. And that could be asked. I think at the time we talked about it, the issue came up was that traffic studies like this, or traffic studies in general, are usually in an area where there's, I think Joel made the comment relative to, typically, it's a high traffic usage, and, you know, we're talking several hundred here, but I think it may not be a true traffic study in the sense of a complete one because of the small numbers versus something that's a little bit larger, so.
Or could it be a situation that we take the study, include what's already happening, and then that, and multiply that by what's being proposed for, for units?
You know, and taking a look at what I was briefly given from Oronoco Township, and looking at the numbers that were there, they were estimating a minimum of another eight hundred cars a day. And, you know, this is just a part of, I think, a problem that's going to be developing on Minnesota Avenue. And I know that we've changed the traffic a little bit by doing speed signs that are up there right now. But when we look at what's going to be coming in with Dollar General, and you look at, at, you know, the direction of this, because I know eventually something's gonna be here, you're gonna have, I think, some backups and, and some major congestion because people will be turning left to go into Dollar General when they're heading north. And there's no way to be able to get around it. So that's, that's number one. And looking at rush hour traffic and that, and heading south, you've got no, no right turn lanes or anything that's, that's there. I think that it's time that we, we do a, a traffic study of everything that's going to be going on on Minnesota Avenue, just so that we're prepared for what's going on. And it could be even looking at a Hundred Street on, on, uh, doing some work up there too, and possibly having a roundabout being put in there, because that traffic is also gonna increase when you get the development that there is over there with the diamond area, coming right off from Minnesota to a hundred. That's gonna eventually be developed as well. And so all of those traffic patterns are gonna change. And I think these are things that we need to be taking a look at now. You know, not after the fact, but we should be addressing those at this point, so.
So the, there's been comments about the traffic, increased traffic on Cedar, Cedar Point Road. That's currently in place in a while, but if you look at the, what's being proposed, there's, there's Timberline Drive, there's Second Avenue, there's Cedar Center, and Cedar Point Road, so really, there's technically four accidents versus, that there's various ways that they can.
They only go to one place, Minnesota Avenue. And so you've got to look at Minnesota Avenue, you can't look at the other.
So the speed limit, I think, is a step in the right direction.
But I think that's just, and I agree, that's just a step. And if you try to come down there, and I'll tell you, I've worked trying to, to come and, and reduce to get to that speed limit of thirty, I can't do it. You know, I mean, and I don't know, maybe other people are better, but I, I sure can't. And, and, you know, I think the minute you start hitting the brakes, to hit that thirty mile an hour, everybody behind you is gonna be hitting the brakes the same way, and you're gonna have, again, I think it's, it's gonna be a mess that's there.
Well, and speed limit helps in terms of safety, but it's not gonna, it's not going to do anything in terms of volume.
Yep.
Well, one of, one of the things that was really brought to our attention, the, the guy that lives on Timberline Drive, that made a couple of different comments, you know, with this, with this Hamilton situation, and they're gonna be extending Timberline, the portion of Timberline Drive will be connecting into this. A lot of that traffic is gonna be coming right back through there. They'll have two outs, but you're also gonna have Timberline Drive traffic for a certain point, become, be coming through this development.
All this traffic isn't gonna happen until this is complete.
Yeah, it's gonna be a traffic mess.
Which could take years.
I don't know, I don't, I don't envision a four lane on Minnesota Avenue, but we have developers that are coming down and can change happen here. We could reduce all the resident speed limits to twenty five, too.
I don't think that reducing the speed limit is gonna take care of the traffic issue that there is. Still, like I'm gonna say, if you're going north on Minnesota Avenue, and you want to stop in a Dollar General to get something to, to pick up, there's no left-hand turn lane to go into Dollar General. And so you're gonna be backing up all the traffic, especially during rush hour. And I think that most of the people that are gonna be stopping at that time are gonna be picking up something that they might need during a dinner hour or whatever that there is. And so you're, you're gonna, you know, back everything up, and it's just the start, when you add all this stuff together, that I think right now, to take and do a, a good traffic study of Minnesota with the increased traffic, would be what we need to do. But right now, this is where we're at today, and so with this and what we've got, I've got to deny what this is, because we just, we're not ready for this.
So when will we be ready?
Well, let's see what a traffic study comes back with. Then we'll have to turn around and come to council and, and, and be able to deal with that.
That's one direction we could have have Hamilton look at doing then.
Well, yeah, but, but, yeah, and these are, again, there, there are so many things, again, we're not saying no, and neither is anybody, I believe, at Cedar Woodlands, saying no to the development. That's not it. It's, it's the timing and what needs to be done to have everything in order first before you do it. And I think, without a doubt, we've got the cart before the horse. And these other discussions, that there are things we can do, I think are discussions that should be under public discussion, that there is with the people in Cedar Woodlands, that we get together and have a workshop, and turn around, and let's put all this stuff together where everybody knows what's going on. Right now, we don't have that, and that hasn't been done, to try to find a way to, to do this, to make it so it, it works with the city. Like I said, Hamilton's bought the land, there, or Ari, I take that back, but Ari has bought the land. But it hasn't been done with the interaction of what needs to be done with the people that are, that are living there, and to find the right solution.
Well, the solution is gonna cost, is taxpayer money. And we're talking about ninety percent of the city being influenced, are being seen the reciprocal of increased taxes for streets. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I'm saying that Cedar Woodlands and its forty-two lots versus four hundred ninety-seven sewer lots and more for the whole residents, so we got to be cognizant of everybody downtown from increased taxes or lack of tax base that could cover these type of changes.
Well, I, I do believe too, and, and I hear what you're saying, okay? But I do believe that, that if the people in the community really felt that they had an input and bought into everything that we're looking at doing, and the reason why we're looking at doing it, if we needed to do that and there was a tax increase, and they felt that they knew what they were doing with their input on what they wanted, I think that most of them might be open to doing that, knowing they're getting exactly what's gonna be good for the city. So I, I, I come against that, you know, just with that point. I think arbitrarily doing it, no. But again, with working together with, with the city people and, and the community, I think that you might get a whole lot more of that's there if you get the involvement, so.
You know, that's, that's a possibility, and public hearings will see how that plays out. And, but I think if there's, that's something that, if the Hamilton would take away from this, is, is a traffic study to combat that, might be something that we come back with our next plan, too.
And again, I agree with, that would be definitely a part of it, so.
And, you know, the next item, the safety infrastructure sidewalks, we realize that, that's, that's, there are no sidewalks, we have no ordinance for a sidewalk.
Well, and, and again, at this point in time, I will say the answer is yes, okay? But right now, we're in the process of rewriting everything with the ordinances and the code with WSB. And there's no saying that when we look at stuff and get an interaction that there is with the community also, that maybe possibly the new developments that come into the town. And if we're looking at changing lot sizes that go along with it, it might be a part of what we have for the code for new developments that are coming into this town. And I'm not saying everywhere. If you take a look at the map that, that they had over there with, with, with Ari and Hamilton, if you took just the main east-west and would be north-south, you know, major streets, and if you put a sidewalk on, on those, not just throughout the whole part of it, it might make sense, and it'll be easier for the school buses and for the kids to be able to get to the school buses. So again, this is part of what WSB is looking at, and it's also a part of what you've gotten from. So again, this is part of what WSB is looking at. It's also a part of what you've gotten from. The report that, that came back from the EDA. But, but these are things that I think that, that are ways to work through this whole thing to make it workable. For the community and the residents that are over there.
That's true. I guess that's what. And that takes time, we know, and that's going to happen sometime.
But we're already in the middle, yeah, but we're already in the middle of doing this. This isn't waiting for an RFP to be done, you know. They're already in it.
The, the investors look, they're looking to move and, and start the.
And, and, and I understand that and, and investors are investors. The community is the community.
Sure.
The investors lead. We're leftless leftover afterwards and, and I'm sorry, I, I believe in the community and what the community really wants to have. Before I turn around and look at the investors. Because if the community's on board, the investors are going to be happy and they're going to be happy with the project that comes along afterward.
I agree. And I, and we got to look at this from another perspective too. I mean, this is why we have the public hearings is to get the public input. And if we're not going to listen to the public, then why are we having public hearings and we're a dictatorship? And I, I don't think we can, we can do that either and sustain a city that people are going to want to live in. You know, I think we have to listen.
Those are all, those are all good points and we hope, um, that. What happens here tonight will still hopefully have developers come to us, but, uh, we're not.
I, I don't, I really, I don't, I don't think that we have to worry about developers coming around. Developers are going to be waiting because they realize how nice the community.
Finish our discussion for them. Um, any other comments? One comment about turn lanes, you know, there is a turn lane right at Gassing Hill and people and Cedar Woodlands, I see people using that right turn lane. As opposed to going down to Cedar Point Road too. So that's, that's a possibility, so.
Can we put this up for a vote, please?
I'm not done with my comments. I'm just saying, did you call the question then?
I just said, let's put it for a vote. Yeah, I'm saying that's, we've had discussion, let's put it up to vote.
Oh, this, this is a voice vote?
Yep.
Councilman Penegras?
Yeah.
For denial?
Yep.
Councilman Richards?
Yes.
Councilman Phillips?
Yeah.
Councilman Erv?
Uh, yes.
Me around. I would say Dave. Next item is, um. Twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven. The rezoning. There's two copies, one is a underlying one and another one is a clean copy. Well, this is in reference to the rezoning of the development of. B two to. Some, some portion of B two to R two. Or some of R one to R two. It's moving, this Phil mentioned it's moving that. Uh, is there zoning line out, um, about three, four hundred feet, something like that to have more townhomes. After more offering, housing offerings, so. Which is. Which is. Much numerous times in our comprehensive plan too of density and when we do get a, a. Premium plan. Comprehensive plan references increased density, so that's, that's part of our given. Somewhat direction that we use and we talk about and everything, so.
Uh, I make a motion, um, to also deny, uh, this on that. Second. Resident number twenty twenty-four twenty-seven, is that right?
So in this, um. Let's go through it. Finding of facts. Talks about, um. Oh, the same one with, with the increased traffic, maybe impacts.
You know, and there is another comment that when we look at this that I wanted to make is, well. Uh, when you turn around and you look at the city and you look at the future land map that there is for the city that, that we're going along with here. Um, there's a tremendous amount of R two zoning that there is just on the other side of the street or behind, um, Two Sisters. That's already there on the future land map, so. It's not saying that, that, you know, we're against or I'm against what there is for the multifamily or the other. It's just, it's, I want to keep it where it is for the future land map of what goes on because there's room for that, uh, in that area.
Well, I think if you don't, uh. I mean, if you change this, this property to R two and you already have it across. You're going to be full of apartments and that whole area is going to be full.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm saying. So I'm not against. That it's already in our future land map to be able to be done. So it's already being addressed with the city, which I think is a wise thing to do. As good allow for that, so. Maybe Tom would be happy to sell his property too as well. I don't know.
So when we talk about density and, and, uh. The R two density and the R one, or this is about R two, you know, but. The density that R two is. Projecting with the townhomes and everything and the, uh, quads. Um, it still is very close, my understanding, still very close to our allowed. Units per acre for R two development. So it's not like this is a, a huge influx of. Violating the R two. Density because it is really, it's, it's within intents of being the correct what's allowed. So from that standpoint, it's.
Well, again, it's, and, and I thank you, Ryan, and I think that's good. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying we don't have R two in the density, which we have across the street, okay? What we're doing is we're saying we want to keep everything that there is in that area. To be the way it's designed right now for the future land map. That's all we're saying. And if, and, and again, for what you want to do for the R two with the density, go across the street. It's there. And, and there's no complaints about that. It's just what, what it is with this. So I think the growth and development of the city is going to be able to handle that without a problem.
But here's an opportunity. A hundred and seven units to help paying off our. A billion land because our comprehensive plan talks about density to cover the costs.
So are, are, is the reason behind this whole development just to cover the, the sewer? And they'll pay you if they came and if you ask the people too. If there was going to be an increased cost for their sewer bill. And keeping this the same, knowing we're going to develop it down the road and be able to do it. I think that they would go along with that, keeping everything the way it is right now. So.
Here's one thing I think you're forgetting. It hasn't been mentioned very much. You know, the city is a community. We have all kinds of income, families downtown, fixed, low income. Senior living. And what we're considering doing here, we have six million dollars in debt. Six million dollars, we had twelve million dollars, six million dollars is covered by assessments. We're also picking up. We're also responsible for the other six million dollars for operational. And that's, we acquire that or pay off that through user fees. And at the same time, there's a new development, whack and sack and fifth fees, they all go towards helping pay off that debt. If we don't do that, I'm not saying. We won't do that right now. What we have in front of us is a plan to help with. Funding that and to keep our sewer rates down. Our taxes down from the standpoint of increasing so that we get more density, which our comprehensive plan talks about, to help cover those. Yes, I talk about it a lot, but it's, it's, it's just the idea that if we. If we don't allow the density to occur. And there's a sheet in here that shows that, uh. Increase our tax losses every year versus keeping all big lots versus a hundred and thirty-six lots versus twenty-one big lots. We lose forty-five to fifty thousand dollars a year in taxes, just in taxes alone by having, not having the density. So we need density. Comprehensive plan talks about density. Phil talks about density. Yes, it's about density, but that's our growth comes from density, allowing more people to come and enjoy. This small town and everything downtown has to offer. And. I don't mean to be repeating myself, but destiny is very critical and. My concern is that. The people that, that, um, the fixed income, the low income, they're going to suffer from. Not allowing the density to occur. That's what, you know, part of us a council, we need to be responsible. Yes, we need responsibility for those citizens too. We also need to be responsible for the whole city. And I think by. Denying everything here, we're imposing those increased debts on everybody.
And, and remember one thing I said, Ryland, off of this stuff too, is I'm not against the development. Neither is anybody that there is in the, in the room back there against the development. What we're saying in the density increases, go across the street and you have the R two. Uh, and, and let me tell you, the other part of you read what was going on by the EDA and what they had to say. You know, we live two miles away from Rochester. We don't live twenty miles. We live two miles away from Rochester, okay? There's a lot of different housing options that there are in Rochester that we're never going to be able to have in Orinoco.
I'm not saying we need to match Rochester.
Well, no, but you're saying all these other things. And one of the reasons why people like to live in Orinoco Is because they don't necessarily want all that density. And if you want the density, two miles down the road is Rochester. You can go in all the density you want down there. You know, so again, I'm, I'm not against the development of what's going on with, with Hamilton or Ari. What, and I know it's going to be developed. If, if Ari sells the land to somebody else, it will be developed. Okay, Arntia will be developed. But I want it to be developed the right way and done with the right. Uh, cooperation with, with everybody as it fits together. And that's not what was presented to us. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
So what do you mean by that?
So what I mean is there's going to be people that are going to be moving into that area that's going to have access and going to be paying for taxes And also be paying for the sewer that goes along with that. There's no question about that.
Hey, nothing's wrong with that. It's just, it's no.
And, and here, here's. My thought on it. I, I kind of feel like we're being forced to change our lot sizes because of a developer, what a developer brings us. In reality, we are in the midst of changing our zoning laws, changing lot sizes. But. I don't think it should be a developer that's going to tell us what our lot sizes should be. I think we need to go through the rigor. Like we've done on other things, get community involvement, come up with that lot size. And hopefully our code will, will be done in a short amount of time. They've been working on it for some time. But I, I don't think that. We should have a developer, whether it's Hamilton or anybody, come in and tell us, this is what, you've got to change these lot sizes. Cause if we do change lot sizes. It is what it is. It's, we can't, we can't change that.
I was, I was doing the math on the, on the smallest one of the quads. And it's per unit, it's twenty-three hundred square feet. How small is the quad? How small is the unit inside? It's twenty-three hundred square feet per unit.
And it's a one, it's a one car garage.
It's a one car garage on, on private streets. It's nothing, it's giving nothing but headache for.
And then, and just to make note of this one too, Ryan, if you go back to the meeting that was done, uh, November of last year. When Hamilton first came to it.
New trip, November fifteenth.
Uh, whenever, which is that, that meeting in, in November. And, and in that, um, at the end of the meeting, Jamie had turned around and said, I give you guys planning and zoning. Two weeks to change your zoning. And we went, no. We're not going to change it in two weeks. Okay, so this was addressed from the very beginning. About that, that we wanted to do that, okay? So it isn't something that's new. That's come up, but something that, that, that we turn around and, and address right away at that time. So with that, I'd like to turn around and put this up for a vote as well.
One other comment about the quads that I will have your vote. I think, you know, we think of the quads and they're meant to be for single people. They're meant to be for senior citizens. We know senior citizens want townhomes. There's townhomes being built all over this surrounding cities. And they play a very important role for starter families, seniors that want to live in Orinoco. And I think that's very, we, we like to have that, but it's just. So the, the, the challenge that we have with, with. Working with the developer is that, um. If this goes away, this plan goes away and I think Hamilton has stepped up to allow five big lots across the street from Cedar Woodlands. I think that was very admirable about them to approach Cedar Woodlands and say, hey, we want to see a transition. We'll put in these five lots, five big lots, compliments across the street. I think that's very nice. Let's say, um, you come back with your lots of whatever that number is, nine thousand, eight thousand, ten thousand, whatever that number is. So, um, and then he comes back with a. Hamilton comes back with a proposal of what they want to do. But because all those small lots, smaller lots is in the code. Those five homes, as an example, twenty thousand is going to go away. Because developers won't spend the money to put in infrastructure for five big lots. They would just soon put ten to twelve homes at eight thousand square feet lots. And we have, they meet our code and there's nothing you can say.
No, and what you're saying is. You very well could. Also, there's nothing in, in the code that says somebody can't buy two lots.
And put a bigger homeowner.
So that's, that's one that, that would take care of that and they would be able to get their money for. For what there is, uh, for doing that. Also, if you look at, at what they proposed. Um, and it was stated that if they put the proposal and they start the, the development and all of a sudden the townhomes sell more. They've said that they've got the option that, uh, whether it be the second or, or third development, that they can change and do whatever they want to do. So that's also in the contract. So there's things that are in there that, that really kind of open a door to a lot of different things that are there. So, you know, that's why I'm saying. We keep everything and again today, what we have tonight is a matter of, of denying what this is right now today, which was presented to us. All those other things are open for discussion, okay? And I think that everybody in the, that's, that's a part of that would be happy to be a part of that discussion as well. It's just what we have tonight that we need to vote on.
One of, one of the things that really got my attention. Is it's called a common interest community plat. That's drawn up in this, the language was in there. And it says that common interest community plat was going to be determined by a future owner. Go ahead. So, so that tells me that. This isn't, it might not be followed through all the way to the end by Hamilton. I'm not saying they're not going to. But if you're doing a common interest community, that's determining the walls and stuff and, and the, and the boundaries in the, in these quads and stuff and I. So have a hard, have a hard time with them.
So you said that you were making a comment. Can we go for a vote or we?
Uh, just one other comment. So there's also development agreements. Development agreements bring a lot of these details out that maybe not lines on the drawing. So development agreements do bring in a lot of detail, the type of thing that you're talking about. We're not talking about development agreements here, but that's just the point.
You have it in your hand?
No, I did, we have the process of going through it.
We're in the process of going through it.
No, we're not.
Can we put this up for vote, please?
Sure.
There's a vote for denial.
Yeah, I know Erv had wanted to talk.
Well, I was just going to make the comment that.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
The city's in the process of making smaller lots right now, right? Well, isn't that going to create higher density and? Well, isn't that going to create higher density in R one already? So what's the sense in rezoning? Because you're going to have the same opportunity for higher density.
Yeah, we've had, we just did a lot split here last meeting and it was thirteen thousand square feet.
Right, okay.
We had lots.
We're up, we're up for vote.
Yes, Rita. Councilman Pendergrass.
Hi.
Councilman Richards.
Hi.
Councilman Phillips.
Hi.
Councilman Erv.
Aye.
Mayor Rowan, Nate. The next item, that's approved. Uh, this council is resolution twenty four, twenty twenty four dash twenty eight. I'll be nine, the request for variances to residential lot size, lot with private streets. For the development on the Cedar.
Here, make a motion, uh, deny this. But I'd say that I agree with this, but it's part of denial, so.
So wait, there's some items that are new. Underlying twice, there's some that added on.
There's a clean one behind it, right? Twenty twenty eight, name behind it. Yes, there's another one, yeah. We don't have any other screens that are. That are private, right? Yeah, this is the title of the zoning too.
We did have a private street up in Riverwood Hills. Several years ago, and we turned it into a public street.
Was that a result of? You're not being wide enough?
I know I did.
It wasn't wide enough in the city when.
More of a maintenance aspect, snow pounding, I think, was an issue with this. Residents came to us and asked for it, so.
Yeah.
But this is what um. Got all the details of the lots and everything and. The private streets are concerned are. With our code or some division code, I should say, whatever, some division code that doesn't speak. It is, it comes out right and says they're not permitted, but they're definitely not looked on right favorably and making sure there's no public funds used for and things like that.
How long, I'm in your neighborhood, right? How long was it before? It came to the city that they wanted to turn that into a public street?
How long had, well, I was, whatever Riverwood Hills was built.
Like two thousand and six, somewhere.
So it's probably. Before COVID, so they came to the council. It lasted about dozen years, you know. Unfortunately, then came all city for the city to take it over. Other issues with the two of us.
So it's just part of, again, I think that um. These are things that that just can be addressed in the future as we move ahead with this project, which I'm sure that they're going to be doing. Uh, we can discuss and go into the the. The streets themselves, and I'm just looking at what there is for fire and safety and first responders that there are to be able to move through those areas and and get there. Um, and also, if you're doing snow removal, you do a a private snow removal versus what there is, that just can fix up for the rest could be kind of a little bit crazy, but. I just, uh, again, for this one, uh, the motion there, and I'd like to put it up for. For a vote.
Can I clarify the motion? That you you made a motion to deny it, but you what you mean is to adopt resolution twenty twenty four.
For denial, that is correct. Okay, thank you, Ryan.
So no comments or other comments? Call the roll, please. Councilman Pendergrass.
Hi.
Councilman Richards.
Hi.
Councilman Phillips.
Hi.
Councilman Erv.
Aye.
Mayor Rowan.
Hi.
I signed this resolution twenty twenty four dot twenty nine. Now for the plot.
And make motion for denial of the plot. With that.
For a second. So this um. Subdivision ordinance about where it's private streets to where it is. So this is. Item number four. Back page. Are your barriers to allow to private streets in conflict? delivery plat number six. There are multiple places in our. Comprehensive plan that talks about the uh, I can point those out if you like, but that you've talked about. The need for a municipal sewer system, and that's going to offer the availability to. Add density and also promote. Townhomes for unit multifamily dwellings. In the R two district, so. Those are all things that are very applicable from our comprehensive plan.
And and again, um, I'm not against that. We have a lot of R two that there is across the street, um, you know, so I'm I'm. Not against it, it's just in this particular situation.
I think the platform goes more along with lot sizes than anything, so that's where. We're we're negotiating, we're going to be negotiating lot sizes amongst it. Amongst the steering committee on that, I think that. Once the steering committee looks at that, that would become into a public hearing itself, and so it's something that should be looked at then.
What kind of a timeframe is there in? Determining these lot change sizes?
Well, it's part of what goes on with with W S B, and we're into W S B right now for about four months, close to five months. And there's going to be a tent that's going to be put up uh for National Night Out and also for Gold Rush. To participate in what there is for a questionnaire, and and I invite everybody in the city to fill that out. And it's moving ahead, so we're through a lot of chapters that we're already working through, but. The city code book is about six hundred pages long, okay? So it's not something that happens overnight. But but we are looking at that, and the public hearings will be coming up for that as well, well.
I'm just saying, I'm just thinking. When that comes out, this is going to change the plan.
Well, it's again, it's it's all, there's so many working parts that are that are there that that's why. You know, do we have maybe the cart before the horse here for this, so. Anyway, uh, like, again, I said, put it up for a vote.
Before that, I'd like to ask a question of Ari. So in your, would you mind coming forward here, please? So in the discussion, um, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but Eric, what do you see happening with? Um, what vision do you enlighten what's happened here so far tonight? Is there anything that? You would consider? Uh, doing different with the quads and the private streets or is it just?
Well, of course, as we've always said, give us some guidance. That's what I'm asking for. The private street is not a make or break. We came up with a solution. That the experts thought were all right, but we'll listen to you too. And again, I say the experts, Bill and Phil, because they work together on it, and that things that have worked. So of course, we would listen to some things like that. That affects, I don't know, what, a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet, whatever, minor.
Okay, that's a security service.
So we've, as long as I'm up here, I do want to just ask you for guidance. I am obviously a little frustrated. Tell us, you're denying everything. But I'm not sure you're seeing everything, so just give us ideas. As Phil said, you can't say, well, how about this? Here's a solution. Bring these solutions, not just stop the apps.
I think so about.
Welcome, vote. Councilman Pendergrass.
Hi.
Councilman Richards.
Hi.
Councilman Phillips.
Hi.
Councilman Erv.
Aye.
Mayor Rowan.
I know.
So this uh. Includes our discussion. I think that's um. I'm sure it's um. A different message than what some may have expected. I just really feel that this is a, not much as before, that just been closing. I think we've really made a disservice for the rest of the community, that could potentially happen here with our sewer rates. And tax rate, the deaths, neither's either there, and hopefully Hamilton will have the foresight to come back with another plan. And we'll go from there.
And I also want to make a comment that I want that development to go through, Ari. You know, and I think that when we look at everything, when when it's played out, we get the input that there are from the community that there is behind it, and we get a chance to do some rezoning. I think you're going to be happy and it's all going to work out well. I just, I think that. It just was a little bit premature on on what was happening, so.
I don't think anyone's saying no.
No, and that's why we're not not saying that at all. Well, again.
But I do. When and who do we ask for comments and timing and things like that? We worked with you, the planning and zoning who came with our plan, worked with your experts. Got kind of the go ahead back in March, April. Things changed, but we have had no feedback. So who do we go to? Do you, to Geno, to Gennaro, to the mayor, to Jason?
Well, I.
Obviously not, so where do we go to?
I I think that the community as a whole, but. Um, just so you know, too, um, when you did do that and brought it and and it was my understanding back in the November meeting that we had. That it was addressed that everybody from Cedar Woodlands was on board with that, and that's the way it was originally presented to planning and zoning. And with that, we continued to move ahead, thinking that that was the case, that everybody was on board. And then when we found out that they weren't on a public hearing, then it's 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 a difference of what there is, so.
I don't think we said everyone was. We said we met with them. And discussing, but I think even then, November, I mean, it was before we met with them.
That's that's not the way everybody took it at planning and zoning that night of of what it was set, and so again, that's what I think kind of turned. Everything, got it off track a little bit, okay? And and, you know, it's getting back on track, and I think that some public hearings with with the people will come up with some great ideas. And we're we're continuing to work hard on this stuff with with the planning, with with W S B on coming up with this stuff. So we're not dragging our feet by any means. We're moving fast, okay? So it's in process. It's not waiting. It's in process and being done, so.
And I would just add too. Yes, this was brought to planning and zoning and but it wasn't, it wasn't finalized. I know there was some additions that were going to be made. And, I mean, we we can't, we can't base our decision on something that's not final. You know, like tonight, we had something that was final.
Yeah, and so this is how we.
But I I do believe that we owe. We owe Hamilton some guidance.
Yeah, and I I think we'll come up with some some great ideas, and and I'd love to sit down and talk to Ari, you know, so. Until this time, I couldn't do it because that's restrictions that we had with with Mike, and I wanted to go along with what Mike had, so. And abide by his rules that he had set up.
With that, I make a motion, meeting adjourned.
Second.
Mayor, second, everybody saying aye.
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 Always being adjourned at seven fifty.